Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Delation of, uh, any amendments?
I don't see number seven.
Yep.
So, under seven A, we'll make it number three. Let's just list it as a picture. Picture, picture. Yep. Any other additions or deletions?
Well, just once.
Right. I'd also like to add a resolution on revenue sharing. We'll make that I don't need under new business. Any other additions or deletions?
Yes. What was the other addition?
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Great. Reach public count. For your board counts. Consider approval of minutes of September second, two thousand twenty-five.
Approved, second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Let's move on to unfinished business, health safety grounds.
We got at last board meeting, uh, continued our tour of buildings. Um, we did end up going to, uh, Red City EMS station. And if the shared department was pleased with coming back on Wednesday for Mahaw. So, we will get to the shared department next week. Uh, we're still working our way through all the county buildings. I will tell you right hand about updated list of what we're signing, if our findings are in the first due December. Um, it's kind of a worry of some of that stuff right now. We did also discuss a RFP for snow removal. Committee reviewed, um, the preliminary RFP that was prepared by our administrator. And we'd like to go ahead and have the committee send back to the committee whole permission to release the RFP. Whether coming back to health safety ground for review part of coming back. So, I would make that class.
Second, if I can, Mr. Deere? Discussion. Yeah, can you clarify? I had a trouble here.
It's a request for proposal for snow removal for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. We're not doing anything other than gathering information, trying to come up with pricing. And we'll bring it back to health safety ground before we bring it back to the board for discussion.
Okay, that one's a bunch.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
And that's pretty much what I got for it.
Okay, thank you. To move on to new business. See you away. Mr. Allen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I had just two things this morning. First, I'd like to bring up that trees on is the status of the custom building. The custom meal site location. As far as I know, the custom, uh, custom building, Seaway building, they have closed out by right. Um, I've talked to me with people who are purchasing, most of last week. Um, and they just told me they were still processing, should be very soon. Still using as a meal site, it's being used when we have a lot of people signed up to go there. But, of course, we have to look at another option for when they take possession, take ownership of it. I talked to them about us using that facility as continued use of meal site. I have some interest in that. From what I talked to him last week though, he's interested in only contracting with us on a three-month trial basis. Two months after that, he wants to do three-month contracts. Cost-wise, he's looking at roughly a hundred dollars, about fifty dollars per day to use up. Which will put for a whole year, that would be just over ten thousand dollars for us to use that facility. Um, we have other options. That would be my suggestion to do so is I've been in contact with the county township. The village of custom, they're called there, they cross the street, next to EMS building. It's also a library is at, and they are open to letting us use that facility. Um, actually, we called three of the board meetings. The cost for that, um, they have offered for us to use it for forty-eight hundred dollars a year. And that is based upon a contract that we were generating here. And in that contract, I would like if it did go through with it, the state that, um, if you don't get a lot of people who are signing up to go there, and we're not open, let's say sixty or so times. That's what I'm going to, I want to have the site available. They want us to pay whether, um, where they're not, that's the reason why. So, that's an option we have right now. I have other places I was looking at, I didn't know, I was looking at, um, the doing center, but they don't have. Handicap testing in that facility. Uh, I looked at a couple of other places for those, as well. Really, that's our best option right now. I think it's probably not a bad one. Cost isn't huge, it's much less than we were paying to have that building in custom. And it's also utilized as a trial basis. Get people coming there, start looking out, look at maybe some other options in the future. But that's what we're now, we're only over about fifty percent of the time in custom. We're only averaging seven people in session. So, that's what I'm looking at. If you want to look at comparatively, so, when we closed Albert and Red Cities and moved to Percy. That place got moved by Marion, has a lot of people to go to. If you look at other places like in past county, they offer one place, work rent down in the tree, and we're looking at. Um, if the custom didn't make it all, then there's only two. People who live like in Albert, Rain Township, North Albert, Southern Township, many of those can choose between coming to Marion or going to. Percy, and they do, and they drive easily fifteen or not more than twenty miles to come to our facility. For people in the custom neighboring area, if for some reason, and I think that's what some of us went, some of them are outgoing to Marion, which isn't that far away. That area, and then those living in the neighboring area, just not there, not that far away from Percy. So, I think they're who can start to sort of, uh, so, I see. So, that would be my, my request and suggestion is, is, uh, work on a contract. Temp to present to the board of the county township, the village of custom, utilize that facility. I won't say the trial basis, but it will be, just because the contract allows us to. But I did want to go through the moment, because if it pays off, then I would follow.
I'll make that motion to the contract. You said prepare contract.
Right.
You don't want to actually contract.
I do want to contract, but my, well, I'm not, first, I'm on authorization to write up a contract.
Yeah, I'll make that motion now.
And then, uh, then I have to bring the contract back to the board, present it to their board, there's a lot of, uh, as well. For the county township, without, I'll get into those, the, the.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Well, this is just basically preparation.
Preparing.
Yep, just move forward with whatever need to.
Yeah. Just start looking around for places.
Yeah. Do you have an approximation of what the cost would to utilize the custom facility per year?
Well, it'd be forty-eight hundred dollars for us to use it, that would be our rent. And then, we would have to purchase some new things like a locker or storage bin on meals that could be moved out. From their storage area when we live there. We're going to utilize their tables and chairs and a lot of their stuff there, so the costs are pretty minimal.
No, I meant, what did it cost us to run the original?
Oh, the original set, oh, I'm sorry. That's, that's hard to compare what would, what it's gonna be, but what it was when it was full kitchen. Uh, it was right around twenty-two, twenty-five thousand a year.
So, it'd be significantly less contract for them. But keep in mind, you don't have kitchen, kitchens now, first. Right. That was a big expense portion.
It, it's still a lot to keep that building, that's a lot.
So, so tell us the plus and minus of the county township all sizes.
Well, the, the size is much smaller than the current site, which, um, would be a lot more fitting for the number of people that we have coming in. We don't fit. I asked over there, I said, I think they said they could fit thirty people in there, but it's just not viable. We, we, I'd say it's, it's, maybe pretty close. And, uh, so, the size is great, the cost is much better. Um, they have a nice parking lot, we don't have to pay for following. Really, um, there's a lot of costs we're gonna lose, nothing to pay for, but. Um, disadvantages are, um, for our clients, right now, we serve meals abroad there, and we serve, uh, a hot serving table. So, it's kind of like, if you bend to our facilities, you know what I'm talking about. It's like a cat area, we come up with a tray, and so, if we move there, we don't have that capability to do it ourselves. They don't have a kitchen, and we have to have at least a basic kitchen to do that. And, of course, our serving table would take up a lot of area. So, instead, we're just gonna send up there our sealed tray meals, but they're still hot, they're still the same meal prepared. It's actually the meal that we serve at all, the whole. So, those meals would come there in a hot box, and so, those people who sign up for meals that day, uh, would get served a hot meal, they're just being those trays. But the main focus though, and that's where I'm coming back with, that's not perfect. But the whole point of a meal site isn't really the meal in the first place, it's the ability for them to have the opportunity to socialize together. And have that camaraderie and communication. And that's why I don't want to give up. Now, that would offer that. So, in that situation, we offer the exact same thing we have.
What would be the hours?
The hours would be Monday, just like there now, Monday through Thursday. And they would be ten AM to approximately two PM.
Can you explain with board one more time, the corner of the city area agency, I mean, our, um?
Area agency and agent requires us to have these six people in attendance for the meal site to operate. If we don't have six people in attendance, it doesn't count, normally we can't use, uh, those numbers to calculate for those. You want to repair a thing like a school, we don't have enough kids there, we can't count the school then. So, we have to have these six people. Um, I started, it was twelve, I got there eighteen, I found six because of the war, but it has to be six. Custom averages seven, if they do have people there, that's, they're just not always available to be there.
Marion just?
Marion is probably in twenties and so is.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Better say aye?
Aye.
Close, no?
Thank you. My second thing on the agenda is, if you remember about a year ago, maybe not that long ago, I was looking at getting, uh, another vehicle for COA. I was looking at a truck. We're in need of some vehicles in the COA. We haven't, we haven't purchased any in six years. We have two that need to be, but it's one actually, it's a two thousand fourteen caravan. It's got a hundred and twelve thousand miles on it, these are the things here for us to own of it, and it's, um, it's got some engine issues. The other one is another two thousand fourteen caravan, a hundred and eighteen thousand, a little bit better condition. But again, it's starting to develop some engine issues, um, we have a loan right now, it's a hell of a new front end, and the rear hatch is busted out, so it doesn't look the best either. Now, I was gonna put this in my budget for next year, purchasing vehicles. But because, um, this year, um, I had put enough in there to cover not only our kitchen and some other things, we had some money that I was looking at. It was kind of left over, which said that wasn't good use. So, instead of getting it next year, waiting, asking for permission that we could utilize those capital funds to purchase new vehicles this year. That way, we can get those vehicles sold, those to older aging many bands. Now, I wasn't very happy when I seen, never purchased a vehicle since twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, I had sixty-two thousand in a fund, I was able to get three vehicles. Can't do that anymore. And, uh, so when I looked at the state bid rates, and I have that right here, I was looking at a seven-passenger minivan, whether it be a Chrysler, um, Pacifica, or a Voyager. Uh, for, they have a Transit, it's a large van, there's really no other smaller vans at the time there. The state bid price was forty-one thousand six hundred and forty thousand four hundred. And so, I contacted them, and I was gonna bring that to you, but then when I did a search, I found actually to get it cheaper by just purchasing them as a, as an outway from a dealer. So, I contacted a few dealers from doing a search in the area. And Fox, Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep and Ram, um, out of Grand Records on Plainfield, has two, um, vehicles, a twenty-five Voyager and a twenty-five Pacifica. The Voyager is thirty-nine thousand nine hundred, the Pacifica thirty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty. Total cost just under seventy-nine, with this, under three thousand, seventy-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-nine. Baker Auto Group out of Big Rapids has the same vehicles, although their costs are higher, their Voyager is, as you see there, all thirty-nine thousand four eighty-six. And the Pacifica is over forty-one, six forty-four. And then, of course, I added my bill cost to the state bid price, which will be eight two thousand. Now, we currently have, um, just over eighty-one thousand in our capital, um, that I utilize. I have not earmarked for any of that issue for, you know, this year, utilized purchasing of these, more utilized. So, I'm asking for permission at Newsong, um, and I would suggest doing so from Fox, Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep, Ram. I know it's not the closest one, but it's one that calls these the Jeep. Do so, then move forward, and I also request if we can sell.
Okay. Questions? Oh. Why a Voyager instead of a Voyager?
They have four of yours.
Okay.
I, I, I call and ask what they had for minivans, and I, when I looked up a Honda trade, and that's this is what they had. And so, it's kind of ironic, they each had, well, um, they each had the same thing. The reason I want Pacifica that's cheaper than Voyager, generally Pacifica's cost more, because of the down-low. But still, they dropped the price. At the one that's bigger, it's not, it's not down low, it's a newer vehicle, so that's why. If I can get two Voyagers, it'd be great, maybe hold up. That's the one thing I was looking at, finding a Voyager for one vehicle and a Voyager for another. But when you had that Pacifica, that was lower price, I kind of shoot that in there. There's no rhyme or reason why, it's just a way to get. They're hard to find, I'll tell you, I, I was very surprised, I thought they would be all over the place. I even looked into the board council, I looked into used ones. And, uh, or seventy-year-old new caravan, thirty thousand miles on it, it's still like twenty-six thousand.
The Pacifica's not a hybrid?
No, not a. Where is Fox? It's on Plainfield, maybe Grand Rapids.
I'll make a motion. I feel like when you sell your old vehicles and purchases.
I'll second. Discussion.
By Chrysler. They're the only ones who have the size van we're looking for. I have no particular reason, I looked like a Ford Transit, because I thought Ford made a smaller van, but they quit making it for two, so. And so, they're just, I looked at a large van too, but those are like fifty.
Who maintains a, yes?
Ours, we.
Yours, yes. Pardon?
We maintain our own vehicles.
We have volunteer drivers?
No, I have paid staff who drive those vehicles.
And a team?
We currently have those two vans, we have two wheelchair vans, one's a fourteen side entry and one's an eighteen rear entry. And then, we have a Jeep Compass, and then our large twelve-passenger van.
With these vans, like you said, they're, any exceptions?
Two of them, two of our, and we use those for med transports for, um, handicapped people, wheelchair-bound individuals to the medical transports. We also utilize those, uh, people who do field trips, so people can go and, uh, see what they can check.
We don't have a garage.
Not at this time, maybe some.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
Thank you. Last item I had was a picture. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I was notified through an email from an individual. Who advised that a picture that I had downloaded, um, off of Google in twenty twenty was a violation of. Copyright. And that, that copyright infringement, they, they were filing, um, a suit against COA. Because we replaced that picture on our, so, Facebook page for commission on agent as a, as a background picture. Twenty twenty, um, I did do that. The picture was a picture of a Cardinal on a snowy road. Um, I forwarded the email to Tim, and it was ordered them to, I'm sure, sure, attorney sent there to verify that it was a real claim. And they said, yes, it is. Now, they're having, they were asking in the claim for three thousand dollars. And, uh, the attorney, um, advised that it is a real claim, um, the demand is real, copyright there checked out. He said, don't believe anything further. I did, I had already deleted it, but it's obviously, it's not, it's not going. Um, don't believe anything further, don't communicate something, I kept on, waited till he looks into it. He contacted me after he got into it. And he wanted to know when I got it, I told him, it was in February of twenty twenty. Um, he wanted to use for education, I said, no, but he also advised that we are a nonprofit, and that we didn't use it to make money either, so that was a good thing. So, there was a timeline I had, timeline on it, and we'll be using it. Then he went to the image, and he says, where'd you get it from? I showed him, and it's from, yeah, right here, it's a safe, it's a safe one, it's still right there. It's from two places, actually, it was on twelve different places, but the one that I got it, it says adjusted Northern Cardinal, first out of Pinecone Ranch. It says download for free. And it says for that, there's nothing on there that says that there's copyright, it's just there. It's out of these snowy roads. And, uh, so he said, well, that's, that's a defense too. He said, I got another email from those people, and he said, I forwarded to him, and he said, he would let them know, um, that, uh, defense to it. But, it's called a peppercorn suit. And what a peppercorn suit is, is it's where an attorney, they have an algorithm on their, in their search engine, where they search for pictures like this. And they file these, these claims in the hundreds and thousands, like, oh, two people, asking for three thousand. Because it's not enough to fall into the, the, like, some alarms, and it's not so little, it's a waste of their time. And they do this on behalf of the claimant, of the artist, which doesn't even know they did that, looking for a quick settlement. He said that discussing with the board, the possibility of fifteen hundred dollar or two thousand dollar settlement, or whatever we feel is necessary to fit. So, I talked to Tim this morning, I talked to Christian Craig this morning, and that's why I'm here, is to talk with the board. This is kind of like a legal scam. This, like you said, this picture, probably everyone in here who's ever taken a picture on the internet, it's done exactly over, like, this. And it's, it's just a way for them to, I asked them, because artists seem to get any money, because they're hard to get any money. He says, they'll give them five, ten percent of the dollars. They just, he says, if they get money, then, you know, five percent of it, those pennies they make a week, he says, they're, they're. So, it's kind of about, I mean, that's what it is, so it's a real claim, but it's how we handle it, it's up to us. I mean, we could offer as little as five hundred to see what goes. We'll take that, I'm sure whatever we offer, they'll take it, we could ignore it, not ignore it, but have them say, no, we're not going to fight it. And maybe they go away with that, but I also don't know if there's a cost for determining to do that as well.
It's a cost. So, I'm not lost five hundred. What link do they have to stand on if this stipule is read on there, download for free?
Um, here's, here's a, here's a picture, and that's where it's, download for free, I mean, it's.
Well, can you say when you Google it, it pops, I mean?
When you Google it, it pops up, it's all over the place. You can get it on every, every place in Kansas. Like the guy told me on the phone, he said, this picture of her is not like it's one time in the world event. You can go up your backyard with your iPhone, take the same picture of the patient.
What did the legal counsel say about the fact that it says download for free?
Well, I talked to him, he said that that's a defense, but I think what he's saying by making a payment is, I don't know, he said, the cost. Either way, there's gonna be a cost, his cost.
We don't make some sort of an effort, it's gonna cost us more in the long run, which I am relieved to be certain.
My concern is, okay, we go ahead and pay the five hundred, and then who else is gonna be next? Because.
I understand that, but the thing that's hard, it is, is. I know for a fact that if we, if we did decide to fight this, five hundred is gonna be a drop in the bucket, but they can. I agree with Mark.
I don't, I'm not sure it'll ever, if we take it, I'm not sure it'll ever pursue.
Well, try.
I mean, because, well.
I, I'm open to that, but I, I'm telling you right now, that if they decide to proceed, then we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay.
We're gonna pay our attorney fees. But because it says download for free, there's a lot of different things that I kind of think maybe. And as Justin put it, it's a legal scam, and if we just say, no, we're not gonna pay anything, start and see what happens.
Okay.
I.
Right.
I mean, because that photo's out there, so do I. Most copyrighted photos, you can't download.
No, and at least minimum, they don't have copyright somewhere, watermark all over it.
At least when you download it.
Right.
You won't see it on the screen, but when you download it.
Or it's pixelated.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess my thoughts are, we ought to start, like, not offering them any money, and see what happens. If they start to pursue it, then we can start making it.
I'll second. Back to you, I agree with you, if you open Pandora's box, and we're gonna be marked as the organization that paid. How many screen savers, all the employees that put out there, of a picture maybe off the internet? Which could be possible, we could get three thousand dollars, my computer, three thousand dollars, if you, if you used a screen saver that was sold for free. I mean, they could be, they own blood games.
Uh, yeah, I'm just cautious to the rhythm of the conversation.
I can pass that on, again, I'm not talking to them right, but I'll pass it on to our turn. I have a talk.
I'll make that as an exception. I'll second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, no? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to EMS. Mr. Young.
First one is our monthly report. Uh, it is for this remedy, uh, on the third person. So we had two hundred and fifty-one transports uh, for that month. We've had nineteen hundred and a hundred transports uh, year to date up to the end of August. And the South half totals, uh, eleven hundred and one year to date, five hundred and twenty-four for the North half. A hundred and fifty-eight for the South half for the month for the target, sixty-six uh, for the North half. Uh, average response time to the county is thirteen minutes forty-three seconds. Oh, we had. Uh, five treat no transports for the month, fifty-one for the year, uh, pre-hospital transports, eleven hundred and three for the year, a hundred for the month. Transfers, transports, eight hundred and eight for the year, uh, a hundred for the month. Cancelled calls, two hundred and twenty-six year, or for the year, and thirty-eight for the month. Uh, no treat no transports, a hundred and seventy-one for the year, twenty-four for the month. And then thirteen uh, deaths per year. Oh, we have done. Currently, we have filled out year to the date, or year to the end of August, uh, two million four hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven ninety-six, twenty-five cents. And out of that, through the write-offs, we have collected one million six hundred thousand ninety, uh, six ninety-one oh nine. And our contractual write-offs for Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, is uh, seven hundred thousand, or seven hundred thousand, seven twenty-nine, nine twenty-six, nine five. Question five.
Steve, my concern, I love what you're doing, it's very helpful, and I appreciate it. My concern is the quadrant that doesn't have the ambulance service. How to say this, I guess it would be the one with the echoes, or without anything, what our response time is. Is that something that I have?
So. When you turn around and book in a report on a nine-one-one call for response times. So I wrote that down by the South half, North half, Southwest, Southeast, and then the Northeast, Northwest con- uh, corners.
Yeah.
If you go on the chart, the average response time is all units, all the orders left is all the units included. So then the columns go make one, make three, make four, and then that. So the response times under that column are that unit not being counted. So let's take Marion, for example, which is the Northeast corner, and if I pull three out of the equation, it's fifteen minutes two seconds.
Is that? That's an average of.
That's only nine-one-one.
If you pull out, when there's no service in that one, what's the response?
Because you don't know where it's coming.
That's my concern.
But you're talking fifteen minutes two seconds from thirteen minutes forty-three seconds.
Right.
You're less than two minutes different for the that unit's counter.
That's what the response comes from.
That's the time of call, that's the time of call that that unit is called there to the time they're on scene.
Isn't the technical unit stationed at whichever base does not have an ALS unit, right? So there's nobody stationed at all four quadrants at all times? All times?
Yes.
Steve, now that you're, is that set up on a twelve hour schedule, or is that set to twenty-four? Is it twenty-four? So what's cost of that echo unit?
So, I took uh, August, the actual cost for August of last, of last month. Turned around and, because we've been doing it for basically a year now, and averaged it out, so I actually took the cost of one. And we had it for that month, and there was only. Four days out of the thirty-one that we did not have coverage.
With what I'm asking.
I'm getting it, I got it. So, because it's covered with part-time EMPs, part-time paramedics, and overtime crew, whether it's an EMP you can split, or it's a medic that's on the crew. The cost of that, with wages and bike uh, is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety cents a year for a hundred and one calls. And that one is a period.
Yeah, two sixty-four is basically for the vehicle in one person.
That's legit, yes.
In one person. So the majority, that is the majority of that two sixty-four is being paid out in overtime pay, right?
A big portion. And then on top of that, so that doesn't include the ten percent years for the ones that are working over it.
Right.
So you're pushing plus the three hundred thousand for a hundred and one call.
So why aren't we putting the regular personnel on staff or the EMT instead of using overtime?
What was the question?
Why has there not been, if you're gonna use the echo as, as, as an alternative for the station that doesn't have service at that time? Rather than to have to use somebody already on staff on an overtime basis, why are, why are we not?
So you're utilizing part-time as much as I can. It takes two and a half, three people, and it would have to be many additional current staff to do that. Which would probably be the same cost or probably higher, due to not even having benefits, years, and everything else, putting on full-time employee.
What's the cost comparison if the EMT unit out there compared to the EMT?
So, you're gonna, putting in a full-time, a twenty-four hour truck, you're looking for an ALS truck, you're looking at it probably at, plus the nine hundred thousand. For operating the whole truck. If you did, if you did a twelve-hour truck, say, ten to ten, the cost would be very similar to what you're staffing that.
So you'd be like, we're basically giving full service, we do that, whereas the echo, we're only doing, we're only doing.
The echo, the echo generates revenue. And we cannot bill for it. It is, the only purpose it serves is to get into the scene sooner than what the outline ambulance can come to the patient. That's the only thing it does. Whereas if there was, say you did a fourth truck, twelve hours a day for the same amount of money. That unit, when it transports, generates revenue. It also allows for the ability to increase the transfers, which increases revenue. The echo was a band-aid to try and cover the, all four quadrants at the time. And that was what, last August, or actually, the thing was the local four August, that US Board directed me to do was to staff the echo unit twenty-four seven.
And right now, we have six units. We have four in service, two that's at that, right?
So we have, and then given the data, three transporting ambulances staff every day, then the echo. We have six total ambulances. But when you get into the, the North, one of those ambulances is stationed on Mary, and one is in Tussle. So they're housed at those facilities. That work in Reed City both house two ambulances. The actions that we have are vacant, so like right now, I have one in the shop, and I have one in the body shop, right as of today. So we have to maintain spare units to keep our units on the, to keep enough units on the road to cover.
Yeah, that's what I'm using, two of two, and that was the issue.
Yeah.
And like tomorrow, that's wrong. We're doing one in the, in the other, so where's the reserve for that, the that station?
There is. It winds up, if they have to go on service for, like, service, they pick up either on Reed City or Everett, and it gets, they switch into that one where their, their main unit is in being serviced.
You gave us a cost, the echo unit approximately a hundred, two hundred thousand. What about for an ambulance station, what would it cost?
You talking twenty-four or twenty-four hours, seven days a week, or you talking twelve?
I'm talking, um, the whole thing, like you did, and the average of the other three. Full service.
Yeah, you're, you're talking minimum six hundred thousand to nine.
But you're.
Because you're, because now you're not, you're not utilizing part timers to do it anymore, you're putting on full-time staff.
But you're bringing in revenue, just.
There's already that. Yes. The hard part is, is you can't, you can't increase your nine-one-one revenue. The only place you can try to increase revenue is transfers.
Mr. Lang, have a comment?
Well, I think. Uh, it's pretty much all of the other departments, the budget for twenty twenty-six. There's no way to sugarcoat it, if you continue to allow that echo unit function at the overtime rate that Steve's paying. Having Mr. Custer contest us, but willing to at least not all twelve, so if we continue that, you won't be supporting EMS on that. By July twenty twenty-six. You will get exhausted, all of those are predictable. So. I understand the importance of providing coverage, but you have to remember, partly the uh, the nine-one-one system. Is our, our fire department's, that was a rescue. One of the main purposes of rescuing was to provide that initial care until we had EMS coverage there. If you were to close the communal system late in the day, and was after I tried EMS, they'd be, we're going to stay out, two trucks in this company. They're not gonna have three, they're not gonna have four. And it's really stretching Steve's budget. To have that, have that echo unit as a place which is not, rather than generating gas and stuff, but it also is being funded by overtime. It's, it's very hard on his budget right now, I mean, I don't know, Tony, you wanna chime in from sitting in with someone and looking at the numbers? We just don't see a feasible way to continue it.
I agree with Tim, and Jim and I, and Tim all sat down and we looked at this, and I recognized this last year too. The budget that you, he has to come up with to operate four units is not cost effective. It is going to um, run EMS fund out of money, and you will be putting general fund money into it to continue it. So your general fund will be supporting EMS, which is not how that's set up to be. When you do that, you take away from what you need to do with your general fund dollars. So, running the four units is not gonna be sustainable. With the revenue that comes in right now that we receive, it's just not sustainable. It's, Steve was not able to balance his budget for next year by, I think it was close to a million dollars, wasn't it? Million dollars. And then even this year, um, and that hasn't even like taken out the cost allocation, indirect costs that retired all of our other funds. We're looking at, how can they even pay a cost allocation if he has to operate four units, there's no way, so.
What's the cost accounting in the ambulance station, the average ambulance station, after we um, reset? Go off. Okay, we, we can get money for our regular stations, ambulance, sports, ambulance station, we did. What's the term? We, it generates revenue.
You're talking, are generated revenue.
Generates revenue, but there's a cost that revenue doesn't cover, so I want to know, after the revenue's generated, how much is the cost?
So we, we generate, this year we're projected, if it keeps going the way that it is, we'll be probably just over two point four hundred in revenue from ambulance. The other revenue comes from the.
That would be divided by three, or three stations?
You can't do it by three, it's, you got, because you have more than just the station. So, yes, we have three stations, but technically, there's four. So I have to maintain four buildings. But it's not just the maintenance, it's the electricity, it's the propane, or the natural gas. So you mind this, okay? The average, national average cost for an ALS truck, staff one unit, is from about one ninety-one point four per unit.
Okay. So the six hundred thousand, or the nine hundred thousand you quoted, I mean, that was a really gen- revenue already generated.
No, that's cost.
That's.
Because you don't know where it's been brought. So I run by you, nine-one-one is not. The nine-one-one is not gonna, hasn't changed much in here. It's the, the only way to increase is trying to gain more of the transfer, to increase that revenue. The hard part is you had, uh, two private services surrounding us, that, that's what they're in, this one service will empty account. And take empty every service, every ambulance they have to take transport, and leave nothing behind for nine-one-one. I've known for a fact that they're on the east side of us, they have three counties next to us. They have got two ambulances that cover three counties. That's where private service hits. And like Tim said, here, you would probably get with a private service, you're still gonna pay them, they're not gonna do it for free. You would get two, maybe two and a half trucks.
I, that's a concern, there's a couple of things that, just, what, after the revenue's generated, what actually costs this first station? And I'm concerned about when there is no ambulance in a station, what response time?
That is very doubtful, that's in the monthly report.
Would it be advised to have, put together a plan, bring back a twelve-hour truck, twenty-four-hour truck? We used, when I worked, we ran three and a half trucks, every day, pretty much. We had three full-time and a twelve-hour car, twelve-hour truck. And we used it to generate, you know, I don't know, you use it for part-time, or you split crews, whatever else. But we did have, for the majority of the time, three and a half trucks, you know? So I think maybe, to help with this, or that, we need to see something.
Right, I think maybe the start of this, we said, time in the budget, something like that. Is to ask Steve to put a couple of different options together, just review it.
Yeah.
And then we can kind of bring something forward, okay? And by all means, let's think totally out of the box, to try to figure out, because, as you say, you can't just all of a sudden say, hey, we need more calls to increase revenue. The only revenue generator that you can do is. And.
And everybody's fighting.
And the dumb side of that is, well, you're taking transfers, you're taking that truck out of service, for people that might need a first emergency call, but what do you do? I mean.
So this is the hard part, the hard part of the way the medical system changes. You don't have hospital. You have health systems. And these health systems are very large conglomerates, they have multiple hospitals. Let's take the ones in our backyard, for example. So they merged at Beaumont this year or last year. So, it's back from when they merged, they had thirteen hospitals, only had nine. That's twenty-two hospitals throughout the state. So what they end up doing is a lot of services, like in Big Rapids, they used to have Ortho and. So what they end up doing is a lot of services, like in Big Rapids, they used to have Ortho and Rady, a lot of other services. Those services got pulled away, they got put into the larger communities. So therefore, if you need that service, you wind up going basically, what we call is the mother ship. And they use the outline hospitals to feed the metropolitan area. And they all do it, it's not just Corwell, U of M does it, McLaren does it, they all do it. Because that's the model that's basically nationwide, that the hospital system changed, the health system. So these people, whether, whether it's a nine-one-one or whether it's a transfer, the transfers are still vital, on, the people still need to get where they need to go for definitive care. And the hard part of what it is, it takes a transfer from Reed City to Grand Rapids, it's three hours now. But turn around for them to get, get in the hospital, pick up the patient, drop them off and get back. Best traffic, so. That's where we kind of land with our call volume, okay? I keep track of it on almost a daily basis. We'll probably be somewhere around four thousand total calls during the year, which is just a higher than what we did last year, if it continues the way it's going, but maybe could, calls. Um, and it's hard, we try to stagger the transfers so we're not sending two of them at the same time unless one happens to be merged. So we're still being very conscious of the nine-one-one call volume that we have, but also still taking care of patients that need to go to the other facilities, true? Whether they're our resident or not, because they are in our community and still need that. Although I'm saying that the echo unit is, there is no revenue. It's just costing us money. Putting on four trucks, twelve hours a day, I don't know how much we would be able to increase our revenue, but the potential to increase revenue is there versus what we're currently hearing.
And what was that, that was said again, proposed, projected for this year?
It was over nine hundred.
Oh, so it's not just the echo?
No, that's, that's a third of it.
Right. Well, you're still generating revenue in that locale that does not have an ALS unit, because the echo unit will go there, but then an ALS unit comes from one.
Correct, but that, but that, we're paying money out to staff it. That is, that, that unit itself creates no revenue.
Well.
You're running two trucks, but only one gets.
Yes. And we.
Well, right, you're not collecting for the, for the echo, but you're collecting for the ALS unit that goes to that call.
Which we still pay him.
I know, but if you put a fourth one in, it's not going to increase the number of calls that you're responding to.
No.
Because you still have a unit that goes from a different quadrant to that location. So the revenue that you're collecting is maxed out. I mean, just because you put a fourth ALS unit up there, doesn't mean you're going to have more calls.
Correct.
You just eliminate the cost of the echo.
Right.
And you have potential for some revenue, because. And where I say you have the potential for some of it, so you can try to increase your transfers, is at that juncture, now you can send two of them at the same time versus one. So you do have the potential that we're not losing transfers that way.
Are there a lot of cases where we refuse a transfer because?
We're not refusing, what ends up happening is, if we get backed up and it happens to Macosta the same way, we wind up getting backed up to where we're three or four transfers in a row, reminding us that it's three hours. Around, so you're given an ETA, they may not wait for us to be freed up to take that transfer, and they may look at another service to do it. That does happen. So that's where the fourth unit would be a positive, I just don't know. And that's why I said, if you're looking at doing a change, at the cost, it's about the same amount of money to do a twelve-hour transport truck, which has the potential to increase some revenue, where the echo firm and never will, and nine-one-one calls produce revenue, to help offset what we're trying to do.
So, Tom? I'll get with you, schedule the date for me. You tell me. Just message. Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Lang. I hope I haven't sooner than later. It's nine hundred dollars a day. Start that up. But that doesn't mean. Just that alone doesn't completely solve the problem.
Correct.
But what Steve's telling you is, probably that much money, maybe just a few dollars more, could have a transport.
Right.
That's what I can have. But at the end of the day, nobody's sitting here, and I appreciate you, it's all alike. Nobody wants to make the hard decision to say, we really only need three transporting trucks in this town. Mr. Turner's been here long enough, Mr. Gregory, those have been, well, the county politics know that years ago, property was purchased, right, in Dayton, that Twenty Mile, the building, North Station. That turned into a political nightmare up there. You had the West Side upcoming to eat, uh, they wanted an EMS station in somewhere in Tustin on the west side, so you ended up with a station in Marion, ended up with a station in Tustin. Central population, as you see by the reports Steve's been providing since he's been the director, is ignoring the calls when it's south into the county. Guess we need some region in the north, and we need four stations. Yeah, you feel that you need one up there, or it should have been, but years ago, on Twenty Mile, right there, hence the road. But we have what we have, but unfortunately, there's just not enough call volume to support the system that we all want. So the decision's going to be made, or really the only option, if you continue down the path we're going, is you're going to have to fund it out of the general fund. And if we don't have the money in the general fund to do that. Tough spot to be in this year and next year. I like the idea, I think, of advance, and that's, that's the hash, and either there's options. There's much inside, and there's the option that may be increased mileage.
I believe that Millich question will be up next year.
Thank you.
The next time I have this, you know, uh, write offs to collections, this is actually April, August, uh, sixty thousand two hundred forty-five. Uh, we did collect just over, just a hundred forty-three hundred dollars from collections for that. And at this point on, I think I'm just going to ask for approval each month on my, the financial report. And that is probably every month what we schedule right on. That way we're not forgetting it. Like, we ask for that. Approval.
So, second.
Discussion?
We still use your collection agency.
Yes. Did get a breakdown, uh, I forgot what it was. Uh, Tom actually broke down the reasons for the flight. And some of them just, we can't, we no longer have address, the boarding address, that winds up being part of it. Uh, some of them refusing to pay, and some of them are, the same person refusing to pay multiple.
Yes.
So I will try to get a, I will try to get a breakdown on that, and if you guys want that.
Can you clarify the motion? This means you won't bring this to?
No, the motion was to accept the write-offs, or accept the write-offs to go to the collections of sixty thousand two hundred forty-four.
So we come back.
Right. What Steve said is, he's going to address, that's secondary to the motion. The motion is to accept these write-offs. But Steve said we're going to start looking at the write-offs monthly, so we don't forget to address them.
Okay.
In time. Any other discussion on the write-offs? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
Well, the next thing I had, and this was in my, uh, capital proof budget, uh, is my place of residence, five years, there's three of them at the Reed City Station. Uh, they're currently over fifteen years old and, uh, are pretty worn out. Uh, did, uh, end up reaching out, uh, Phil actually got a quote for me. Uh, the quote from American Firehouse Furniture, it's the one I was recommending to the board, and it's, uh, twenty-nine hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents, uh, compared to Player Station Outfitters, which is thirty-three ninety-five, and another one was forty-four sixty-eight oh four. Uh, the reason we went this route versus the route we did year before last for recliners, Tustin and Ever. Uh, they don't seem to hold up very well, and they're supposed to be papers and chairs. These ones I'm looking at are similar built, uh, as the ones in currently in Reed City that lasted all this year. So I don't want to put good money after a bad product. So that is my request.
Great, have a wonderful.
One second. Discussion?
Steve, what was you, I'll look at him, but what do you have in your capital?
This will cover, it also gives me about two thousand dollars left, left on the capital that I budgeted, and with that, uh, our office chairs are, the three of us in the office, ours are improved function. I would like to use the remainder of that, or part of that, for replacement of those office chairs.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
Then, uh, the most of me, uh, I did ask prior to, uh, us looking to, uh, scheduling a conference in Pennsylvania, and, uh, did not realize that I was not in the, the board permission to go out of state. So you actually paid the bill last month for the conference, and we already, uh, paid for part of the housing. Um, actually asking permission for me and Tom to go to this conference. It has to do with, uh, billing revenue and some out of the box, out of the box revenue ideas and compliance with Medicare, Medicare. And it's something we go to all the time, Tom, a long years ago, and this year.
Yeah.
It's a managed, actually, national conference, I'm hoping it came along useful.
I hear a caution.
I'm watching the group that.
One second. Discussion? What is the kind?
It, uh, is October nineteenth, uh, or twenty-one, so it's the twentieth through the twenty-second, that is, the conference. So it's basically trial and before.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
Then we received a letter from Michigan Department of Human Health and Human Services Bureau of Nerds and Fairness, EMS and Systems here. Uh, this is from Emily Perkowitz, which is the director of that division. Uh, I would like to read it to the board. Uh, so here, Mr. Young, I'm placing a form within your program, this is our education program. As under the Spirit of Your Testing Achievement Recognition, which is a star letter, your EMT student, uh, achievement for past twenty, or for a twenty-twenty-three pass rate of nine percent or higher by the third attempt placing your program among the top performers in Michigan. This accomplice is especially meaningful as it was, represents the first EMT class taught by Jenny Anstrum to myself coming in. In recognition of her education passion and lasting impact on EMS education, we are honored to dedicate this letter to her memory. This recognition reflects the high quality of instruction and training your program provides, as well as the dedication of your faculty, staff, and students. It highlights your program's strong commitment to excellence in preparing EMS professionals to serve our communities with skill and profession. On behalf of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, congratulations on this outstanding accomplishment. Your program's success sets a standard for excellence in EMS education across the state, and we look forward to your continued achievements in the years ahead. So that class actually got a hundred.
All right, let's look at discharge of mortgage for Carol Drive. Let's go ahead.
So, we received a discharge of mortgage notice, this was beyond emergency housing, that, uh, this individual utilized the program in the past, and the house, the house being sold, that one comes back into the program. It's just shy of nineteen thousand, that'll be coming back, and they'll be able to be, they'll come back in and see federalized money next year, utilize next year, discretion of the board again. So what looking for is a recommendation to authorize more chair to sign the discharge of mortgage.
So. Glad it.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Next is the resolution versus the revenue sharing. Um, analysis emailed out to the full board. Here I will read the resolution. Um, the Assa County Board of Commissioners, resolution number, closing house of representatives fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget cuts to the county revenue sharing, whereas counties are mandated by the state of Michigan to provide eventual public services, including courts, jails, elections, public health, public safety, and human services. And whereas unlike cities, village, and township, counties do not receive constitutionally guaranteed revenue sharing, and instead rely solely on statutory revenue sharing, leaving counties uniquely vulnerable to annual state budget decisions. And whereas the House of Representatives version of fiscal year twenty-six state budget proposes a three, thirty-four point nine million reduction in county statutory revenue sharing, wiping out a long overdue progress made in fiscal year twenty-five to restore revenue sharing to sustainable levels. And whereas the House plan, if enacted, will leave counties with just over two hundred fifty-six million in statutory, statutory revenue sharing statewide, while constitutional revenue sharing for cities, villages, and townships is set to reach a one point one billion. And when combined with statutory revenue sharing, the CVTs would get one point four billion. And whereas the House plan shifts forty million into restricted sheriff funding, with strings attached, requiring counties to maintain power law enforcement funding levels, even as flexible revenues is reduced, thereby further straining already general funds. And whereas public safety dollars directed exclusively to sheriffs are not equivalent to revenue sharing, since they cannot be used to support the wide range of non-mandated services counties must provide. And whereas the Senate budget proposal provides just over three hundred and twenty million in county statutory revenue sharing, an increase of twenty-nine point one million over fiscal year twenty-five includes sixty million for public safety that cannot be allocated at the discretion of the county boards, rather than bypassing. Whereas the Senate approach respects county government, strengthens general fund flexibility, and better equips counties to meet the broad stretch statutory responsibility. Therefore, it resolves that Assa County Board of Commissioners strongly urges the Michigan legislature and government to reject the House revenue sharing cuts and support. To reject the House revenue sharing cuts and support the Senate's proposal to increase revenue sharing. And provide flexible funding for public safety. And be it further resolved, copies of this resolution be transmitted to Governor Gretchen Whitmer. State Senate Majority Leader Winnie Brink's, House Speaker Matt Hall and Chairs of the House and Senate Appropriations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. I'll make that motion that we've adopted the resolution.
Second.
Discussion?
Where did the resolution come?
Mac.
Mac, I think. My second question, do you know what the Senate plan is?
Not completely, um, per detail, because I'm not sure they truly have it completely put together yet.
They don't have a plan, they're just gonna increase it.
Right.
In other words, that for years, the last two, three years, they've been discussing possibly taking eight percent of the first two percent of the sales stack. So it's always the same every year, and as the county does well, so goes revenue sharing.
Right, because our revenue sharing is statutory. The House and Senate can just do whatever they want with it. And unfortunately, we have a ton of mandated and honestly, some funded and a lot of unfunded mandates that are responsibilities. And we're expected to make up the difference when they cut our revenue share. And it would be a, I haven't been able to find a chart that compares what we were supposed to get. To what we would get if these cuts go through at the Senate, or that the House. But it looks to be fairly substantial by looking at the amount of money that we're willing to take away from our revenue share. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right, any other business? Extended public comment?
I'll make a comment on the revenue sharing. I actually, yesterday, because it was brought to my attention, uh, sent a message to Representative Coats, and I do have an email. Unfortunately, I can't read it at the moment because I'm live streaming, but I would be happy to share it with you guys afterwards. Uh, in the email, it did mention about funding for the police through two bills that had already gone through the House. Uh, so they were taking that into consideration. I also have a copy of the House Fiscal Agencies Report on how it would compare between twenty twenty-three, or pardon me, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. I'd be happy to email it to you guys if you want some type of breakdown like that. Thirdly, another reason to consider AxMyTax, uh, it would make county revenue sharing for counties constitutional. It would give, guarantee you a six point six seven percent of the share. Plus guarantee funds for essential services such as your roads, your fire, your police. They ran the numbers for the county, um, based off on the revenue that was taken in last year on property tax for the county share and what have you. And the county would have actually got almost four hundred thousand dollars more than what they did, um, with their revenue share, so. Just advocating that it would give guaranteed financial money to you guys, just saying, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Or employee? I just have one thing that I want to get the board's input on, but, uh, not looking for any definite order action at this point, or motion. Um, supervisor from Sherman Township, that you had in, approached being actually at the last board meeting. The intersection of M one fifteen and Mackinac has been a very dangerous intersection over the years with a lot of accidents and quite a few fatalities that's actually been. He actually had a resident of Sherman Township reach out to me. It was resident witnessed an accident recently and was mortified that it happened once again. And Mr. Ackley was asking me, our board would be willing to support a joint resolution with Wexford County. And trying to lean on M that to do something sooner than later with that intersection. They have enough statistics over the years of the number of accidents and things like that. That they shouldn't have to go into great depth in detail doing road studies. There's been talk of the men are around about, traffic signals and stuff. But he's just trying to get some leverage, some movement, so they actually started. So just curious on if the board would be willing to support that. Um, at the Mackinac Conference, I'm gonna catch up with the board chair, Wexford County, and see if they would get, going together, trying to do something. Just looking for plots and stuff from the boards.
Where to herd? And if they're all, if they're here. And on holiday weekend, you're trying to cross, you'll cross that highway.
And a lot of the local residents now are moving down to what they call sex corners, which is just the police meant for crossing. But that's, that's sex intersection. And that is equally as dangerous as one fifteen, Mackinac.
Oh, please, talk to Wexford County.
Their end support. Okay. All right, I will leave a motion to.
So who would, second.
All in favor, Regina, please say aye.
Aye.
At least you can, thank you everyone.
Recording stopped.